Good morning and welcome to Elgin County Council. It is April the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, nine AM, and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Everyone's had opportunity to peruse those minutes. If there are no errors or omissions, I entertain a mover and seconder. Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Crockett. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Remind members of disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Counselor Woodner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Item six point six, the bridge rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right, noting that. Section five, committed to hold.
Resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Do I have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Hens. And Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to section six, reports of council outside boards and staff. Six one, the warden's activity report. It is before you. If there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain them. Otherwise. Make the motion.
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, March two thousand and twenty-four, dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, from Warden Ketchaba, be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Teller. And I think Counselor Noble. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six two, the acting manager of planning, municipality of BAM official plan amendment number thirty-six, part of lot ten concession three municipality of BAM, five five zero three two Vienna. Is Paul on the line, or are you dealing with us, Nick?
Good morning, Mr. Warden. I had intended to, and I've just reached out to Mr. Hicks to see if there's any technical difficulties. And I'm wondering if we just stand it down to the end of section six, and we'll see if we can reach him. If not, I'm happy to present it on his behalf if he's not able to make it.
Okay, if council's amenable to that, we'll just defer that for a few minutes. All right, let's move on then with Director of Legal Services, PS twenty-four five, land division committee remuneration procedural change.
Good morning. Thank you again, Mr. Warden. So I'm presenting this to you as sort of the person who's overseeing our planning and land division at the moment. So I received a formal request from the Chair of the Land Division Committee. And the substance of that request is contained in the report there. And essentially, the Land Division Committee is looking for two things. One is an incremental increase to the per diem rates that they're paid for both the half day and full day of meetings, which, as I note in the report, has not increased for some time. And the suggestion is that it go up by twenty-five dollars a day for the half day from one fifty to one seventy-five, and then for fifty dollars for a full day from three hundred to three fifty. I can advise that most meetings of the LDC are half-day meetings, if that's helpful for council to know. The other change that there's, oh, sorry, and to cap off the fees piece. The Land Division Committee is designed to be revenue neutral, so the suggestion from staff should council wish to proceed with preparing amendments to the bylaw to change the compensation. The suggestion from staff would be to increase the fees for applications, as noted in the report, and that'll come forward in the fees and charges by law within the next couple of council meetings. On the procedural side, the request is to basically go back to doing site visits by Land Division Committee members. And in the most recent bylaw that sets the procedures of the LDC that was passed just during this term of council. There was a change that essentially made it so only the Secretary Treasurer or the Secretary of Treasuries designate would perform the site visits, and the Land Division Committee members would like to go back to performing those site visits themselves. I've laid out some of sort of the background of why that change was made, as well as sort of the merits and drawbacks of site visits in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. But in terms of my presentation today, just really looking for direction, this is, I'm really presenting a request from the LDC to council. It's up to council whether you want to move ahead with these, and the direction I'm looking for today is to come back to you with proposed amendments and explain them in a future report. But I didn't want to go ahead and do that work without some direction from council on this request.
All right, thank you for that report, Nick. Discussion, Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden, to perhaps members at large. Were counselors ever on this in the sense of was the land division started as something, because we have our different committees as roles of council? Just for curious, for history's sake, was it ever done through council itself?
Not for a long, well, no, this land division had its roots back in the seventies. And the intention of it was always to maintain an arm's length from the political side, so that you didn't have that you know, politics getting involved here. It was still, it was a semi judicial board of council.
Thanks for the clarification.
Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't have an issue with the increase in pay. I think it's probably long overdue, and considering what some public members get paid in other boards, I think that's pretty reasonable. With regards to changing the bylaw, I never agreed with this bylaw when it was passed in twenty twenty-three, I guess. I think there should be a member of the board or the land division onsite visual as like a picture's worth a thousand words, right? Sometimes we get drawings of a hand-drawn sketch of what's going to happen, which is sometimes not exactly accurate, and I think a visual on the property is acceptable. Do all the land division members have to go to the same site? No, I don't think so. I think maybe two appropriate, one with the adjoining municipality possibly, so the travel is reduced a bit. I do agree that at least one member of land division needs to see the site personally.
Personally, I would concur with that statement as well. I think, as you say, it it gives the opportunity for the members particularly in that area to explain to the board what this actually, what the consent actually looks like, and perhaps clears up any misconceptions. If I understand, talking to various members of the Land Division Committee, it was something that a training exercise was actually recommended that they do. And I understand there were reasons from an administrative point of view of why they pulled that. But I'm not sure it was the right move. I agree with what your comments are. I'm getting, I don't see any backlash on talking about per diem increase. And one of the directions you're looking for as well is how to deal with the site visits, whether it's a flat fee or mileage.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Counselor Woodner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I think with that, I'd just go with mileage. I think that would make it cleaner, easier. I do agree with the increase in the pay. And with today's technology, photos and overheads, you could really highlight a place. I mean, it's great, you can go see it, that's great, but the rest of them can look at the photos and the overheads, and that could probably be improved, so. Yeah, I agree with all that stuff, so thank you.
Okay, any other concerns, questions? Thoughts on a flat fee versus mileage? I'm thinking mileage, too, is probably the fair. Okay, any other discussion on it? Seen none. Catherine, have you got something there for us?
Resolved that the report titled PS twenty-four dash five, Land Division Committee Remuneration, dated April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, from the Director of Legal Services, be received and filed, and that the Director of Legal Services prepare the necessary amendments to bylaw number twenty-three dash zero three to adjust remuneration of the LDC members, and bylaw number twenty-three dash zero five to revise the procedure of the LDC to be considered by council at a future meeting.
Okay, there's the motion. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Woodner and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, I see Mr. Hicks has joined us. Do you wish to back up and take that report now? Allow Paul to get on with his day? Okay, let's go to six two then, for the acting manager of planning, municipality of BAM official plan amendment number thirty-six, part of lot ten concession three municipality of BAM, five five zero three two Vienna line. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Warden and members of council. Apologies for my tardiness this morning. And before council today, we have amendment number thirty-six to the municipality of BAM's official plan. This is a site-specific exemption to a policy in the municipality's official plan two one seven one. And that particular policy states that where a farm parcel with more than one existing dwelling is being consolidated into a farm operation, only one dwelling may be severed from that farm parcel, and no more than one severance of a surplus farm dwelling shall be allowed from the original farm parcel regardless of changes in boundary or ownership. So in other words, if a farmer has taken possession of a farm that has already had a house severed off of it, another house as a part of that, through that consolidation cannot be severed off. In this particular case, we have a bit of an odd situation or unique situation where a farming operation has purchased three sets of properties a number of years ago, and has continued to sever off the surplus farm dwellings from those properties. And they are, they are coming back to sever off an additional surplus farm dwelling severance or surplus farm dwelling, but that runs afoul of the municipality of BAM's official plan. So this particular applicant is seeking an exemption from that local policy. With respect to the county official plan and the provincial policy statement, no such similar restrictions on surplus farm dwelling severances exist in provincial or county policy. So with respect to this particular application, we certainly view this, or the staff position is that this certainly is a local matter. In this case, the council of BAM has determined that they believe it's appropriate that the applicant should be allowed to continue to sever off surplus farm dwellings from their farming operations. This is rather a large farming operation. Again, from a policy perspective, county staff don't have any issues with respect to the provincial policy statement of the county plan. There's no such similar restrictions exist, and we're satisfied that this is appropriate and good land use planning. So the recommendation that I have before council this morning is for an approval of official plan amendment number thirty-six to allow this site-specific exemption. And with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for that presentation, Paul. Does anyone have any questions? Clear as mud. Perfect. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approves official plan amendment number thirty-six to the official plan of the municipality of BAM, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Noble and Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Have a good day.
Moving on to six four, Director of Community and Cultural Services, Library, Museum, Archives, two thousand and twenty-four service update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to members of council. I have with me today members of our team, so Natalie Marlowe, our manager of library services, Madeline Howard, our curator, and Gina DiWali, our archivist, in case you have any further questions about specific aspects of their service. This is just a general service update about just some of the programs, events, and projects we have going on in the three institutions in our department. And I would like to draw your attention to a few highlights within this package. So for library, in some of the slides, you're seeing how our library spaces are working with community service agencies to utilize our spaces to meet community need, such as through things like income tax clinics, employment counseling, and not outlined here, but even health initiatives such as blood pressure clinics in partnership with the VON. This is showing that the intention behind our leasing framework established in two thousand and twenty-three is bearing fruit in terms of utilization of our spaces for other community agencies to come in and use these branches, while at the same time making sure that we are still maintaining and our core service such as loaning materials and programs. I want to draw your attention to the program we're hosting with London's Deputy Mayor Sean Lewis at our Belmont branch on April thirtieth. I encourage members of council, if you're able to attend, I will be leading a fireside chat with him as part of our inclusionary programming. We are really pleased, and I'm not sure if the library van is still in the parking lot right now. No, okay. Well, we're really, really pleased to go old school with our van and to rebrand this as the bookmobile. Utilizing some great images from the library's history within our archival collection. And we are working on bringing the bookmobile concept back to life. And so early days of exploring, bringing the bookmobile to our long-term care facilities on Wednesdays, where we will be actually able to facilitate mobile loans. Still a lot to work out there. We're working with our QP partners on how that's going to work. Natalie's got some considerations regarding how that collection is going to be made available to the van just for that particular day. But we feel that we've got some good opportunities in working with our long-term care, and we may then, we're going to view this as a pilot project, and then we'll have some more information for council as to whether or not we can actually expand this service and see what's feasible going into two thousand and twenty-five, so. Just in terms of how our programming proceeds for council's information, we did approve a programming and partnership policy in October, which outlines the scope of programs we offer, how the content is selected relative to community need, and issues such as intellectual freedom, and how we manage attendance, how costs are allocated, how we handle requests for certain programs from community members, and how we evaluate their effectiveness using techniques such as audience surveys, participant comment forums, social media feedback, and the feedback of our staff. When it comes to programs and offerings, our operating budget does contain fifteen thousand dollars annually to support program costs, which are distributed to branches on a proportional basis, basically small, medium, and large categories. We also have a main office allocation. And then each branch also engages in fundraising to support programs, which results in at least that much amount of revenue, so another fifteen thousand dollars a year. Those branches that engage in that revenue or the fundraising are able to use those funds specifically at that branch. So as an example, it could be a service club supporting the Reptile Show as an example that we had for March break at a particular location. So just some insight into that for council's information. Regarding museum and the Heritage Center, this is a time of major transition for us, and I want to thank you, Mr. Warden, and members of council for attending Mike Baker's retirement celebration on March twenty-eighth, where we had just over a hundred community members, local museum professionals and staff, as well as members of council attend, in a great celebration of Mike's career. You're getting a sneak peek in this package of the mural that will be installed on the exterior west-facing wall of the Heritage Center. So this is the last time I brought an update to council. We actually talked about putting it on the north portion of the west-facing wall, but it's going to go on the south portion of the west-facing wall, because it just is a better vista for people to be able to see it. So this is just a sneak peek, and it is done. It has been clear-coded, and we're waiting for installation. And now we are in the process of working with our ONIDA partners to arrange for some sort of a launch event involving council and members of their community, and likely targeting a meeting in June, perhaps June eleventh, but I'll have more information on that for you once we confirm it with, again, with our ONIDA partner. So really exciting project for us that will be launched more formally in June. Just regarding archives, our major project coming up is to realign our public services, and the research services in particular, to the fourth floor. So with the imminent completion, and I think we've been using the word imminent completion of the elevators for a while here, but let's hope it's really imminent, that we will have the ability to bring the public up to the fourth floor and have that as a much more public space. And so we do have our work to do on the fourth floor to prepare it for public service, and we will be working diligently to get that work done. I can assure council that. Maddie, I feel, is up to the challenge, so she knows what needs to be done, and then we'll use that space to be a public reference area and consolidate our staff, our archives, and museum on the fourth floor and supporting the Heritage Center. The current space in the basement for archives will then just remain storage and will be expanded to where the research room is located. So in the coming weeks, Natalie will be reporting on library performance for two thousand and twenty-three, circulation figures, program attendance, and those types of things. So with this in mind, the team here and myself are happy to answer any questions members of council might have.
Thank you very much, Brian, for that report, and I want to thank your team for attending this morning, too. Any members of council have any questions? Yes, Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Brian. So how far did you go back for a picture of the old bookmobile?
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the question. So I think the images, we went back as far as nineteen fifty-six. And there are a few photos, one is, I think, fifty-six, and one is sixty-nine of different bookmobile vehicles as well, too, which is very interesting.
Please.
So in grade one, in box hall, one-room school, I remember the bookmobile showing up to the box hall school. That was a big treat to walk onto the bus and cruise the books. That's a long time ago.
Any, yes, Counselor Crockett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to whoever wants to answer the question. A number of years ago, ten or so, I guess now, some people thought that libraries would would decline because people were not reading books, they were doing eBooks instead. I don't believe that's happened. I don't sure what the trend is, but what is the trend these days in terms of actual books versus eBooks?
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question. So you're right, libraries most certainly have not gone away, but there has definitely been a shift between physical materials and digital materials. And actually, since the pandemic, we've seen more of a significant shift in the usage of our digital material. So I'll be presenting in a few weeks on the exact stats and how much of an increase we've seen over last year, over the last few years. There's definitely been an increase, and we are responding with our library service to provide more digital options.
Yes, please. Just a further comment. Yes, Counselor Ziegler, please. Yes, Brian, please.
Just to further pick up on that, one of the things that we know is that when we have a school in proximity, the partnerships that we can have, they just take off. And so in some locations, we have that ability where they can actually walk. And so as an example, Dutton right now, Springfield being another good example, where the school's in close proximity, and we're able to do a lot of things. It's the locations where, you know, we're not necessarily close by. So Sheddington is an example that we have to work a little harder at it, but when we do have those programs, we, just the number of things. So for this month is Forest of Reading, and so we have, I think, five programs happening in local schools where our staff are going into the schools to lead the Forest of Reading program, and then they vote on which book is their favorite. And it's just, it's a really great event for us, and we want to see more of that. A great opportunity coming up is Belmont with the school that's going in Belmont, and the ability that that will be a walkable school to the library, so we're excited about that as well.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Okay, Brian, again, thank you to you and your team. Lot going on. Please.
Resolved that the report titled Library, Museum, and Archives, two thousand and twenty-four Service Update, dated April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Crockett? Counselor Teller. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on with six five, Director of Engineering Services, Geographical Information Systems, a shared service agreement. Good morning, Peter.
Morning, Mr. Warden. Thank you. Through you to the rest of county council. Since two thousand and one, the county of Elgin has operated a geographic information system, and this is meant to meet the county's needs and provide a service to our local municipal partners as well as the public. A shared service agreement has now been prepared to formalize this current arrangement and define service expectations and provide mechanisms for additional services that could be provided by the county. Municipalities have continued to embrace GIS technology solutions that integrate into daily operations in the delivery of public services. Municipal asset management, land use planning, municipal drainage, nine-one-one property addressing, conservation authority regulated areas, and municipal work orders are just some examples of the regularly used data sets and tools that municipalities and other stakeholders rely upon daily. Now, after three years of experience, all of Elgin's municipal partners are utilizing this system to varying degrees. There are currently sixty-five municipal employees who regularly use the system, and that number is expected to grow as municipalities hire GIS professionals. Over the last twelve months, approximately fifteen thousand people accessed the system, verifying that the public and other stakeholders also find this information valuable. In order to formalize the GIS data hosting, management, and administration services the county provides, a formal agreement has been prepared. The agreement includes a standard list of ongoing services, and that's provided in Schedule A of the agreement. The county will provide secure access to the server, act as the administrator, providing permissions and credentials to users, ensure data is backed up, maintain and update property parcel fabric, municipal addressing, and road network shape files, add data sets that are collected and prepared and provided by the local municipalities, and provide training for municipal staff. The county also circulates countywide GIS data to approved third-party agencies, such as the Ministry of Health and the Dispatch Center in Tilsonburg. These base services establish a consistent platform and set service expectations. The agreement also provides a mechanism where local municipal partners can request additional services to be completed for the local municipalities' needs. The county receives all requests for these additional services and has the authority to either accept or decline this additional work. If accepted, the requesting municipality would then reimburse the county at an hourly rate of seventy-five dollars per hour as identified in Schedule B of the agreement. This agreement has been presented to Elgin CAOs at a recent meeting with consensus. And for council's information, the approximate cost for the Esri Enterprise GIS software license and GeoCortex Suite, that's a mouthful, is ninety thousand dollars annually. This cost does not include server hardware maintenance costs and staff time. The realistic cost to provide this service is likely double that and closer to two hundred thousand dollars. This is a service that the county requires in any regard, and in two thousand and one, council provided direction to extend this service to our local municipal partners at no additional cost. GIS staff from the county is participating with the municipal staff, and they meet regularly to collaborate and resolve individual and common GIS issues. Staff therefore recommends the attached agreement be circulated to Elgin's municipal partners for execution and be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Peter. Counselor Crockett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a couple of questions, I guess. First of all, is this service available to any citizen? And secondly, I heard you talk about seventy-five dollars an hour. Is the cost, is there any other cost beyond that?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Crockett. The answer to the first question is there are two individual sites, and if you Google Elgin GeoHub, it's available through the county's website as well. Elgin Mapping also is a good hit on Google, on a Google search to get you to this site. There is a staff site, and then there is a public site. They are virtually identical. The staff site has much more information, including confidential property parcel fabric data. So there are many useful tools that any citizen can access through the public site. The seventy-five dollars per hour is simply to reimburse for the staff labor rate. And unless there is an extraordinary requirement to host additional large data sets that would require additional hardware costs, there are no additional costs.
Counselor Cookett?
Just as follow-up, thank you. So as a normal citizen, if I wanted a map of something, you could provide that, but there would be an additional cost for providing the map?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Cookett. The spirit of the agreement is to work with local municipalities to provide additional services, not to the general public.
Okay, Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, through you, Warden, just to follow up on that. We talked about fifteen thousand people accessing it, so could you, is it advertised to the public? How does the public use it?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. I'm not sure that we have specifically advertised its use, however, a number of stakeholders, including, for instance, real estate agents or developers, understand it has existed for some time. The pioneers of this service across Elden County was the Township of Malahide, and they provided the service to most of the other municipalities. For instance, municipality Central Elgin utilized the city of St. Thomas. Most other municipalities utilized a very similar service that the Township of Malahide had provided. So stakeholders in the public who were familiar with that system are now using the Elgin Mapping Tool System.
Thank you, supplementary through you, Warden. So Central Elgin deals with the city of St. Thomas for its needs. Has Elgin County ever looked at a partnership with St. Thomas on this?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. The county of Elgin has not partnered with the city of St. Thomas. The county's needs are slightly different than the local municipality's needs when it comes to GIS services, specifically with asset management would be the primary role, and now with planning as well. Those are the two areas where the county requires this information. Municipalities have a number of other additional infrastructure assets, and they manage that asset through work orders through the systems. For instance, snowplow routing and water assets, and all those types of licensing are also available on the system. So this benefits the municipalities in a similar but a slightly different way than the county of Elgin.
Thank you, and just a final, Peter, I'm not just quite sure about the public interface that's mentioned here. Is that, could you just follow up on that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Counselor Sloan. If you look at that link, geohub.elgin.ca, it provides you an access to a public site there where you can access the mapping.
Okay, thank you, but we don't advertise it, we don't make any, we're not looking for people to use this. It's mostly for our internal staff, is that correct?
It's a balance of both services. It's available through the website, through Elgin Mapping. And if the members of the public, for instance, I had a real estate agent last week ask for some information, I directed them to that site. So it's, we could do a better job advertising this tool and the service that we provide.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know from South Coast perspective, this is a valuable tool, and I know our staff use it regularly, daily. A lot of departments do, Water Department especially. And we know when developers and the general public come in, they've usually have already done their homework and have papers in hand where they actually accessed this beforehand, so they are very knowledgeable, which helps speed the process up, too. So the people that need to use the system know about it, it seems.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Counselor Ziegler?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I just wanted to clarify, the list of services in Schedule A is part of the agreement. There is no actual cost to the lower tiers, and it's only if they request something additional that requires specific work, then an hourly rate kicks in. But at the, all of those services listed at the start, is, those costs are assumed by the county. Just wanted to make that clear, if I understood correctly.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Ziegler. That's absolutely correct. In 2021, County Council approved the establishment of this service and an extension to our local municipal partners at no additional cost. Obviously, we collect these fees through the levy already, and if there are additional hardware requirements, for instance, in the future, that will form part of an IT budget in which council will approve. But those services are extended to the municipalities at this time at no direct additional cost, unless there's additional work requested upon providing the platform and the updates and the other services provided in Schedule A, correct?
Okay, Counselor Ziegler?
Quick supplement, so I noticed then that the possible request is not listed anywhere. So as far as, here's a menu of things that you may request, would that be beneficial to clarify what is possible to request? Or is it sufficient to leave it to technicians who know amongst themselves what they want, what they need, and leave it at that? I just found the agreement, what to me was not a hundred percent clear because it lists services, and then on the page right after lists seventy-five dollars per hour. So I almost thought that perhaps a list, a second list, Appendix B or Schedule B, saying here's a list of possible requests, not limited to, and these services would be at seventy-five dollars an hour. Something like that, I think, to me, would clarify the service agreement further.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Ziegler. The magnitude of the possibilities of what that service could look like very dramatically, and that's because every municipality seems to be at a different stage of GIS usage. For example, and I should clarify that our GIS department consists of one staff member at this time, Tyson Edwards, and he can help me co-author this report. Lots of the terminology I'm becoming familiar with, but this is Tyson's expertise. We are, for the first time, having a co-op student, a Geomatics co-op student this year to help us with the backlog of these requests that are coming in from municipalities. As municipalities grow in their GIS usage, we are able to, for example, develop applications and tools so a staff member could utilize a cellphone to go capture information in the field. That may be a specific request for one municipality. Once we develop it, we could share it with others, but other municipalities may have their own systems available. So the possibility of the requests vary, that the agreement provides a mechanism whereas we receive the requests, and within two business days, we would respond to the requesting municipality if we were prepared to take on the project, whatever that may be, and the anticipated estimated number of hours it would take. If the requesting municipality were comfortable with the timeline and the number of hours, then we would proceed with the project.
Okay, yeah, please.
So my suggestion then would just to change, would be to change in Schedule B to say all fees for services not listed in Schedule A. That, to me, would just make it clear.
Some clarity, okay. Yeah. Okay, you got a question, Councilor, you're good? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Resolved that the report titled "Geographical Information Systems Shared Service Agreement" dated April 9, 2024, from the Director of Engineering Services and the GIS and Asset Management Coordinator, be received and filed, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized and directed to execute the Geographical Information Systems Shared Service Agreement with Elgin's local municipal partners.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Ziegler? And, okay, Deputy Warden Jones, thank you. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Moving on with the six-six, Director of Engineering Services, the Engineering Services for Multiple Bridge Rehabilitations Contract Award. Peter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of County Council. A request for proposal seeking professional services was recently released to provide engineering, detailed design, tender preparation, inspection, contract administration services to rehabilitate five bridges. Those include Eden, Gillette's, Mapleton, Players, and Port Burwell Bridge. There's a map located on page 102 that identifies these structures and their location. The engineering assignment is extended over a two-year period, phase one being in this year, where we anticipate to complete all the engineering work, create, prepare the design drawings, tender permits and approvals, with physical construction occurring next year. And the engineering services would extend to provide construction inspection and contract administration services in 2025. An evaluation committee used a quality-based selection process using a two-submission method procurement policy, and the firm selected was Spree Associates with the highest score scoring proposal. The total cost for the engineering services, including construction inspection and contract administration, is approximately two hundred and eighty thousand plus HST. I've listed for council on page sixty-five the funds we've allocated in the current approved 2024 budget at seven hundred and fourteen thousand. And in the proposed 2025 budget, when most of these physical works would be occurring, we've allocated one point seven one million dollars, so there are sufficient project funds to provide, to pay for these services. The proposed submission from Spree Associates was deemed a successful qualified proponent, and it's recommended for award. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any questions? Okay, just a point of clarification then, Peter, the intention is to do the engineering in twenty-four, the construction in twenty-five. When I look at the twenty-four approved budget, the Eden Bridge at five-ten, is that just a placeholder for the next year?
Through you, Mr. Warden, you're absolutely correct. If we're able to advance engineering work this year, we would tackle the rebuild, physical rehabilitation later on this year. If not, those funds would remain in the account, and we would handle all five structures next year.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Anyone else? Okay.
Resolved that the contract for engineering services associated with the rehabilitation of multiple bridges, Request for Proposal 2024-P07, be awarded to Spree and Associates London Limited in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars excluding HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Deputy Warden Jones? And Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Six point seven, Director of Engineering Services, Cold-in-Place Asphalt Recycling Tender Number 24-T11 and Hot Mix Asphalt Paving Tender Number 2024-T12, the tender awards. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As part of the approved 2024 capital budget, tenders were advertised as per the county's purchasing policy for cold-in-place asphalt recycling and hot-mix asphalt paving on various roads. Seven county road sections will be rehabilitated using cold-in-place asphalt recycling technologies in advance of hot-mix resurfacing. Those include Union Road, Fairview Road, Dexter Line, Putnam Road, John Wise Line, Lions Line, and Chatham Street in Port Burwell. There is a map on page 103 identifying these sections. That map actually includes all of the resurfacing sections, seven of which would be cold-in-place recycled in advance of resurfacing. A total of six contractors downloaded the tender for recycling, of which three submitted bids. Roto Mill Inc. submitted the lowest compliant bid at two point six-three million dollars. Hot Mix Asphalt Paving, there were eleven projects. There's nine roads, a laneway and a paved swale on Talbot Line in West Elgin. The list is similar with the addition of those additional projects. There's approximately thirty kilometers in total that will be paved in this year's proposed work plan. Four contractors submitted bids for the hot-mix asphalt paving, and Brant Co. Construction submitted the lowest compliant bid of four point five-six million dollars. These results project an anticipated capital surplus of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It should be noted that this projected surplus may be reduced to fund the potential increase in the cost of asphalt cement material used in these contracts, and that's tied directly to the MTO asphalt cement price index. So just a caveat there that we have right now a potential eight hundred thousand dollar surplus. Those costs will be better known as the year progresses. A weekly capital update will be circulated to Elgin's local municipal partners as well as the elected officials to inform them of the following week's anticipated works. This will be similar to what you've seen in previous years for our capital planning. Recommendation is before you, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Peter. We've had experience with both of these contractors, and I think they were very rewarding experiences with them. Any questions from members of council? Deputy Warden, please.
Just, it's nice to see these contracts come in under budget for a change, which had been for two or three years now, so that's great to see.
I would agree with that, absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, please, Catherine?
Resolved that Roto Mill Incorporated be selected to complete cold-in-place asphalt recycling on various roads, Tender Number 2024-T11, at a total price of two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents, inclusive of a one hundred thousand dollar contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that Brant Co. Construction be selected to complete hot-mix asphalt paving on various roads, Tender Number 2024-T-T12, at a total price of four million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, or nine hundred and four dollars and thirty cents, inclusive of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contracts.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Widner will move, Counselor Noble will second, all in favor? That is carried, okay, thank you. Moving then on to section seven, Council Correspondents? Items for Information to Consent Agenda? That appear. We have seven point two-one, the St. Thomas Public Arts Center 2023 Annual Report, and a resolution from the Township of Adelaide Metcalf requesting the province to increase the tile drain load limit. Does anyone wish to speak to any of these pieces of correspondence? My Counselor Widner, and then Deputy Warden Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I could see increasing the tile drain load limit. Tile drain uses a lot of money now, probably a fifty thousand dollars is an antiquated figure, so I really could support seeing it move to a hundred.
Okay, Deputy Warden Jones?
I agree wholeheartedly, I was gonna say the same thing. This is a very old, yeah, number that really needs to be updated.
Okay. Counselor Ziegler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just a quick comment on the annual report from the art center. I just want to congratulate them again on another successful year. It's been nice to see all the programming being fully back on, and you can see the results in the report. So, and I'll use the time also to plug in, their next fundraising event is on May eighteenth. So another sort of classic event at the Redtail Country Club is returning. So again, May eighteenth, if you would like tickets, it's a fun event, but very limited space, so limited number of tickets. So please reach out if you would like to attend, again, very, for a good cause and a fun event.
Okay, thank you for that. I was trying to upload it here, and it's still stuck in the queue. So that's May the eighteenth, what are the ticket prices?
Fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We'll move on with the question then.
Resolved that Correspondence Item 7.2.1 be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council support the resolution from the Township of Adelaide Metcalf requesting the province to increase tile drain load limit.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Hens will move, and Counselor Widner will second, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Brings us to section eight, Other Business Statements, Inquiries by Members. And I'm gonna invite Blaine to jump in here in just a minute, but I'm gonna jump in ahead of him and just simply express an appreciation for all the staffs across Elgin County for smooth operations yesterday in this emergency management exercise. Well, it was more than just an exercise, but there were very few incidents, and I think we had, I'm dying to... And I think we had, I'm dying to know the total number of visitors that came into our county. And Peter, I know has had some traffic counts out there, or will be getting that information to us, I'm sure. But it was relatively a smooth operation, and congratulations to all the planning and everything that went into it. I'm going to let you, Blaine, to expand on that.
Thank you, Howard Gordon Ketchblatt. It was certainly an exciting day throughout Elgin County. It was, I think, lived up to all the expectations and the excitement around it. I probably, like most people, woke up at about 5:00 hearing rain on the roof, thinking that we were going to have a bit of a challenge, and yet the forecast was stating that it would clear by midday, which it certainly did, and the afternoon was absolutely beautiful. I would like to, just further to your comments, Warden expressed my sincere thanks to a number of people. Obviously, our local partners did an outstanding job managing their specific situations, which we did see a tremendous amount of people flow into Elgin County to participate in the event. And I think each municipality deserves a huge thanks for managing their situations well. On the Elgin County front, our staff did an outstanding job managing the situation, starting with our tourism group under Carolyn's management, started in excess of a year ago, planning for this and collecting information. And our website certainly was, I think, one of the more stellar ones out there with all the information that it provided to our residents and our visitors, through to our emergency management manager Andrea, did an outstanding job pulling all of the preparedness elements together, and certainly did a great job leading us through that exercise. A few folks, just Chief Ormarod from Central Elgin, Chief MacArthur from Solhold, they were absolutely fantastic to work with in helping coordinate the fire response. Staff Sergeant Ian George and Sergeant Mike Bradley from the OPP, these guys were outstanding to work with us literally every minute, leading up to it and throughout yesterday. So huge thanks to them. Our engineering crew preparing all the traffic flow maps. The plans were in place, they were well thought through, well documented, and I think we only had a couple of adjustments to make throughout the day yesterday as we saw people flow through. So just a tremendous effort by everyone and an outstanding day. And there was a few locations throughout North America that were promoted heavily as the places to be. And as it turned out, Elgin County was one of the only places out of that list with clear skies. Everyone else was dealing with some degree of cloud cover. So as it should be, on all cases, Elgin County was the place to be. So thank you for, members of council, your support throughout the last little while. It certainly was an exciting day, and I certainly hope everyone enjoyed themselves.
Thank you, Blaine. I certainly appreciate the tagline. The place to be. Anyone else, statements or anything? Okay, perfect. Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just like to comment that I've never seen Dutton Dunwich so busy. Currie Road was a traffic jam from my farm, which is about 2 kilometers to Lakeview. Cars on both sides. Back's Page House was full, thousands of people there to witness it, and it was a perfect viewing spot. People from Toronto, all over the place, and I just hope they return for the tourist attractions in Dutton Dunwich and Elgin County in the future. And I'm sure they will, when they see what we have to offer. It was a terrific day.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to that end, so I experienced also, I met all sorts of people who actually walked down various roads, and they were from all over. And so I want to thank the public. I think I found certainly everyone I met and everything that I observed, everybody was very respectful of property and picking up after themselves, and then all of the concerns that we had, and I think being patient. And, yeah, there was a very nice atmosphere, so I really want to thank the public for their cooperation and patience. And to all the visitors, I agree, please come back.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Counselor Tally.
Once again, I echo, yes, the public was great. Everyone did pick up after themselves. I learned a lot yesterday, not just about, you know, the eclipse and that, but I learned that we have eclipse chasers. So speaking to Counselor Sloan this morning, sounds like he maybe had some in his county there, people from Germany, and we had people in our area at Port Glasgow from England and South America, and they seemed to follow partial and full eclipse around. So none of us will be around for the next one, but my youngest is 17, and she'll be 88 years old, she's decided, when the next one comes around, and she's hoping to be there. So it was a great day. I really think the school being out ahead of time, people were kind of a little negative, I found, about that. But in yesterday's seeing that, I think it worked out well because there were many generations enjoying eclipse together in Port Glasgow and sounds like all over Elgin County. So it was a great event, and to echo our CIO, the collaboration was just amazing. Nothing, no blips at all, so it seemed really great. So thank you to everybody.
Well, thank you for that, and I certainly hope you are around for the next one. You can be one of those eclipse chasers and follow the globe. Okay. Yes, Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I got my report from Port Ruche yesterday, and our fire chief said he's never seen so many cars there. It all went seamlessly. The washroom we put in worked really, really well, and very few events. So it really worked out well. The restaurants were still busy at 6 o'clock. Well, that was a good thing, so. And if Elgin County has the ability to control the sunshine, we control the weather for maybe some of the rest of the year for some of the farm roof?
We'll have to take that up with Carolyn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all for those comments. Perfect. Is there, are there any notices of motion today? Matters of urgency? Oh, we passed that, but we can back up for you.
No, I just had it brought forward to me if I could promote the Elgin Women's Leadership Conference, going to be at the East Elgin Community Complex on April 27th. And the ticket cutoff date is April 19th, so anybody's interested, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Just making a note. Is that the East Elgin Community Complex, right? Yes. Thank you. All right. We will then move into closed meeting. After we get open.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239.2. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes March 12th, 2024. And closed meeting item number two, boundary adjustment matter update verbal. Under Section F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Section H, information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or crown agency of any of them. And K, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Mover and Secander for that. Counselors Noble and Counselor Shiger. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, while they're securing the room. Welcome back. Looking for the motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Do we have a mover and secander, please? Counselor Sloan will move, Counselor Noble will second, all in favor? Okay, closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the March 12th, 2024 closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and Secander, please. Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Sloan will second, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that the verbal report from Warden Ketchblatt regarding boundary adjustment matter be received and filed, and that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and Secander, Counselor Widner, Counselor Hens will second, all in favor? That's carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and Secander, please. Counselor Shiger and Counselor Noble will second, all in favor? That's carried. Confirming bylaw.
Bylaw number 24-14, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the April 9th, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 24-14 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and Secander, Counselor Tally? And Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That's carried, thank you, which brings us to adjournment motions.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:03 a.m. to meet again on April 30th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m.
Mover and Secander, Counselor Tally and Counselor Sloan, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much for joining and spend a productive day. Enjoy the rest of the day.